Good evening. I'd like to call, excuse me, I'd like to call the regular meeting of March 5th, 2019 to order. Madam Clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Chavez.
Here.
Councilmember Sternquist.
Here.
Councilmember Yu.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem fish.
Here.
Mayor Mann.
Here. Tonight, we have the pleasure of having Reverend Jake Kim from Westminster Presbyterian Church of Temple City, located at 9642 East Live Oak, who will be providing tonight's invocation. The church is hosting a parenting course, which is open to all parents and grandparents for te- uh, parenting teens, 5th grade and up. This course begins this Sunday, March 10th, from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. at the church. Westminster Temple City is working on blessing our city by increasing parenting skills and strengthening marriage. For more information, you can visit www.wpctc.org for more information. So Reverend Kim, if you could please lead us into invocation. Please rise and please for the invocation and please remain standing afterwards for the pledge.
Yeah, I just want to quickly thank the mayor and city council for inviting Westminster Presbyterian Church, Temple City, to give the invocation this evening. And I'm Pastor Jake Kim, and excited here to be of support. Will you join me in prayer? Dear loving and generous God, thank you for granting us the opportunity to live and work in Temple City, or work in Temple City. We appreciate your love and kindness and desire for everyone living in our city to live healthy and meaning-filled lives. We celebrate a tremendously successful 75th Camellia Festival and its glorious weather that we enjoyed, and the positive spirit and community spirit that we experienced. Tonight, we humbly ask for your blessing and presence upon the work of our mayor and city council, and all who are participating in the city council meeting. May a spirit of community, unity, and empathy proceed all that we can accomplish together. We ask for your help and wisdom in revitalizing Temple City this year as we pray for and pray over the blessing for the Crossroads Specific Plan, Las Tunas Drive Economic Development Study, and the potential new Primrose Area Park, for all of these things that can help with the long-term enhancement of, uh, and quality of life of our residents. And for those households and individuals experiencing hunger, housing, or financial distress and insecurity, we ask for your help and compassion to guide our region's governments, houses of worship, nonprofit sector, businesses, and citizens to respond in a courageous and compassionate way. And for this Sunday, once again, we pray for a blessing upon Westminster Presbyterian Church, Temple City, as it begins the parenting course, to help support parents seeking to increase their parenting skills as they raise their pre-teens and teenagers. And again, we express our feeling of gratitude and blessedness as we know that your loving presence fortifies us and guides us all this evening. In Christ's name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor Kim. Tonight, we have Boy Scout Troop 169, who will be leading the Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, the scouts presenting are Adam Kong, Andrew Kong, Connor Huen, Brian Liu, Timothy Chong, and Thomas Chia, Troop 169.
All those in uniforms, please salute. All those valid, please put your right hand over your heart. Color guards, advance. Color guards, present colors. Color guards, prepare to pose colors. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Color guards, pose colors. Two. Color guards, return to rank. Color guards, retreat. Thank you.
Thank you, Troop 169. Moving on, we have ceremonial presentations. Uh, first off, we have our Arbor Day proclamation. And tonight, we have Mr. Steve Lawson, who is our Parks and Recreation Manager, who I believe you have a, do you have a couple of comments, or are you simply here to accept the proclamation?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Mann. March 7th through the 14th, the State of California recognizes it as Arbor Week. So in conjunction with that, obviously, we're receiving the proclamation this evening. But we will be having an Arbor Day celebration tomorrow, March 6th, from 2:30 to 5:00 p.m. in the Live Oak Park Community Center. Originally, it was going to be held here at Temple City Park, but with the forecast of rain, we had to make a decision, so we moved it indoors. Uh, we have a great day of activities planned. Uh, we have arts and crafts, uh, tree identification station, planting, um, you know, food, a lot more. So, uh, although it's moved indoors, we won't be able to do our traditional tree climbing demonstration with our tree crew, or some of the tree carving, wood carving station, if you will. Uh, but we still have a great day planned, so that was really the only announcement I wanted to make in regards to that event.
Okay, great. Then, um, on, let me just read the proclamation, a few words here. So, um, "March 7th to 14th, 2019, whereas Arbor Day is celebrated nationally to encourage everyone to maintain and replenish our country's vast forests, orchards, and woodlands. Therefore, I, William Mann, Mayor of Temple City, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim March 7th through March 14th, 2019 Arbor Week in the city of Temple City, and urge all residents to observe and celebrate the week by planting trees for our own benefit and for the benefit of future generations." So, um, if I could maybe invite entire council to present the proclamation on behalf of the city. And we'll also have some, next up, we have the poster winner, so we'll, we'll stay up there. All right, next up, um, we have the Arbor Week poster contest winners, and we will also have Mr. Lawson, uh, provide a brief introduction of the poster contests. And afterwards, um, our city council will be presenting certificates in recognition to the winners. Mr. Lawson.
One thing I forgot to add, as far as the Arbor Day proclamation, that is a requirement for Tree City USA, and I'm proud to announce that we were honored with the 16th straight year, um, in 2018 of being a Tree City USA. So just wanted to make sure we announced that. Uh, in keeping with the State of California's Arbor Week, um, each year, they conduct a poster contest. Um, and so we, once again, are involved in that. The theme this year is "I See Trees in My Future." And so we awarded, um, kindergarten through 5th grade, so six total awards. We'll announce them here this evening, you can see them up on the board. Uh, kids, once again, did a tremendous job, um, outstanding artists we have here in our city. So, uh, proud to, again, once again, conduct this meet, uh, contest and recognize them here this evening.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Lawson. So, uh, first off, presented on behalf of the citizens of Temple City to each of these winners, in recognition of your participation in Temple City's 2019 Arbor Day poster contests, your poster-themed "I See Trees in My Future" shall help increase awareness of the importance of trees in our community. Congratulations on your winning poster. Uh, first, we have Mila Husse Madin. Next, we have Haley Chong. Next, we have Christine Du. Hannah Lozano. Angie Sandoval. Michaela Soto.
And if I could get the pictures back, please, they will be on display tomorrow at our Arbor Day celebration.
Actually, since we have one more presentation, I'm just going to stay up here. Next, we have a presentation on Temple City High School Student Club's Skill USA. Skills USA was nominated by our youth committee for council's recognition. Skills USA is a career technical skills organization that allows students at school that take career technical education classes to get more involved in careers they may be interested in. Most of it is centered around competing in hands-on events that encourage students to become involved in the workforce or leaders in the community. Last year, six members won gold at states and flew to Kentucky for nationals, where they placed fifth in medical terminology. This year, at their first competition in January, 40 out of the 55 students advanced to state finals. One of the competition categories was the Quiz Bowl, which is a writing test consisting of questions selected from a wide variety of academic fields. The students will be competing at their third competition at state finals in Ontario from April 25th to 28th. So tonight, the city council would like to recognize students of Skills USA for their accomplishment and for representing the city. Um, so if I may have, um, all the students who are part of the Skills USA come up to the front and center. I would like to present, in recognition of the leadership, dedication, and service you have shown in your community, the commitment you have shown does not go unnoticed. The Skills USA club is an extraordinary example for our entire city.
Good evening, councilmembers. Um, thank you for taking the time to recognize our club, we really appreciate it. Um, we're really glad to have gone this far. This is our second year in Temple City, and we really hope to keep expanding. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. That's awesome.
That's front and center. All right, that was wonderful. And so we move on to, uh, item six, public comments on items not listed on the agenda. Um, I'd like to call Ms. Jing Li from our Temple City Library.
Good evening, mayor and the city council.
Good evening.
My name is Jing Li, and from Temple City Library, I'm here to talk about our upcoming March library programs. And for adults studying today, for this month, every Tuesday, from 3:30 to 4:30, we have an English learning conversation workshop. So that's it, um, these workshops are hands-on, so the, um, participants will learn and practice their English through conversational activities, class discuss- discussion, and informal presentation. So today, we have our first class, and we have almost 28 people attending, so it's like a full house. Um, it's very good, so the teacher was wonderful. And, uh, also, I know the city has a senior master plan, and the library also wants to reach out to the senior, um, sitting as well. So, um, this Saturday, um, March lines, um, March line from 11 to 12, we have a spring sculpture for older adults. And so, um, the students can come to learn the basic techniques of clay sculpture. You can design and create your very own spring-themed masterpiece. And the space is limited, so please call the library for, uh, registration. Um, for teenagers, which is age 12 to 17, we have on Friday, March 8th, we have from 4 to 5, we have adults 101 tool usage and safety basics. So the teenager can come to the library to, um, learn about, um, different kinds of hand tools and safe tool, how to use them, and also the importance of using the right tool for the right project. And also, March is the teen tech, um, month. So in celebration of the teen tech month, Friday, March 15th, from 4 to 5, we have a cell phone photography for teens, so they can come to the library to enhance their phone, um, photography skills with help tips, and also learn about the mailing photography classes available through linda.com. And for the children program, we have our own Camellia Festival Royal Court Visit. That's what's scheduled, March 23rd, is the Saturday, from 11 to 12. So the Royal Court will come to do, um, a talent show, or maybe show and tell, and tea party. Um, everybody are welcome to take a picture with our Royal Court and enjoy Royal-themed art activities. And also, for another, um, program for children, is Wednesday, March 27th, from 4:30 to 5:30. It's crazy about chemistry, so the students will help, will help us perform crazy experiments as we explore chemistry with household items. So those just some highlights of our program, we have mailing program to offer. So please call us at 626-285-2136, or visit our website, www.lacountylibrary.org, find more details, and all these programs are free. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Li. All right, is there anyone else from the public that'd like to address council on items not on the agenda? Welcome.
Good evening, um, mayor and council. I, um, actually, I want to get attentions from the city of Temple City because marijuana issue in Almonte is affecting, um, our city, and then we are really against the, the, the passing marijuana issue. So, uh, we would like to know that is there anything that we can help to stay strong to against the factory be right next to our property.
Okay, okay. And, uh, so we won't be able to directly address you right this moment, but that is certainly something that, uh, our, our city manager can, or any of us can, can talk to offline.
Okay. Oh, my name is Yu Hang Tang. Yeah, my property address is 4814 Ryan Avenue, Temple City, California, 91780. My phone number is 262.
Well, you don't, you don't have to say it for the record. So, um, if you don't mind filling out a form from the city clerk. Um, should I ask you for your email and phone number, and we can, we can discuss with you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to, uh, address the council on matters not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment, and we move on to the consent calendar. Any comments or, or motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for the consent calendar. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Chavez.
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist.
Yes.
Councilmember Yu.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem fish.
Yes.
Mayor Mann.
Yes. So the consent calendar has been approved. Moving on to, excuse me, moving on to item eight, public hearing, we have none. Unfinished business, we have none. New Business 10A Grant Funding Opportunities. Mr. Cook.
Mayor Mann, members of the council, uh, before you tonight, I will be presenting, but I'd be remiss if I was presenting without acknowledging the good work of staff, Brian Harworth, Peggy, Kathy Burrows, and our esteemed consultant, who's helped us many times throughout the years with grant, uh, reviews, is Avant Garde. Um, if you liked the presentation, it's all their good work. If you don't like it, it's my bad, it's my bad, so.
It's good to know.
Always. Um, in any case, I'm going to go through a brief overview of the, just generally, what we've been reviewing and what kind of general themes we've been seeing, both through the internal review that we've been doing and with the assistance of Avant Garde. And then go through, you actually have a matrix. Uh, Mr. Harworth did a good job of, and with Ms. Burrows, kind of giving a breakdown of the, of the matrix, but some decisions that we'd like to at least get some general, or get some direction on tonight, so that we know how to go forward on a few of these grants, which will, um, there, there, obviously, there are timeframes with those grants, which will push certain projects out maybe a little bit farther than you had thought maybe initially, depending on how those, if, if a project is general fund-supported versus grant-supported, but we'll go, we'll go through that in just a moment, though, but I'll do a brief overview. So tonight, we just, uh, we'll receive the presentation, give some directions on some of the grants that we'll be going through on the matrix, uh, return with a bit of a program strategy, and we really would like some funding from, and hopefully, most of that funding will get reimbursed back through the grant process, but many of these grants, especially some of them from a staffing standpoint and a technical standpoint, do take some assistance, um, going through the process, so. So where is the money coming from generally? They're, it's coming from three, if, if we were to categorize where the bulk of the money is coming from, they're coming from three general areas. Multimodal transportation, so for example, if you're putting in bike lanes, you're redu-, you're, you are, you're next to a rail line, you're next to a transit-oriented district, you're near those areas, and those kinds of type projects, there is plenty of funding out there. That first category is tied to the second category, where if it's related to climate change, it is related to, the state has a very strong initiative to re- to reduce, uh, gas emissions, so it through what's, and you've, you've gone through this through your general plan process, GHGs. Both kind of are tied together, but a lot, uh, the, a large bulk of money is coming through there. We'll talk about one of those that is something we can pursue as part of broader projects going forward. And the last one, and where we have a very strong advantage because of the good work that Parks and Rec, the commission, and the council and staff have done in developing a park master plan, talking about the needs in the community, is park and open space. And those opportunities have just come forward in about the last year or so, and will be playing out. We will talk about some of those going forward. But that's where, if you, if you were to categorize where the bulk of the funding is coming either from the state or, or local level, which is coming from both measure A, um, there's local county funds, and there's state funds that are coming in the form of the bonds that were authorized many years ago through Prop 68 that are carrying through and actually coming into play now. Not a lot of funding on the federal side, that's been a trend for many decades now. Our one, a subvention, we would call it, is our CBBG funds that we get that have been dwindling over time. But the, uh, agencies are really funding themselves either internally through their own financing mechanisms, or the state and county is partnering with agencies to make that happen. So you won't be seeing, and in, in this matrix, and in, and in future reports that we bring back, you will not be seeing a lot of federal funding coming our way for anything that's feasible. So, so a couple of things that are worth noting, even within the, even as we analyze, both staff and Avant Garde provided us with, you know, staff providing analysis, and then Avant Garde, you know, looking at our analysis and providing us with some additional analysis as well. And some, always the challenges that you have with some of these grants is there's usually upfront or matching funds. The, the bigger issue a lot of time, and it's in some of your matrix as well, is that many of these programs are needs-based, meaning to lower disav- or lower disadvantaged communities, communities. But in this case, we're in one area where we kind of fall under that category, is that we are considered part-poor under several different standards. Now, those standards could be considered somewhat subjective, but they are the standards that the state and other agencies look at in determining how much green space or open space you have in your community, and how, and where you fall in that category. So on the needs-based side, on per capita income, uh, we only have several, just from, just recently, we only have a few census tracts that fall under the low-to-moderate income households. It's actually near and around, uh, the, the existing soon-to-be moved Chambersite. Um, the rest of the city does not have any of those census tracts, which would drive some of, some of that funding. The last, the last category, I describe it in the best way I could think about it, um, is called, is capital stack. So, um, a lot of funding is out there on, you know, smaller levels, but when you're talking about bigger projects, it, it usually, you want to build it into a capital stack, so you have a base level of, of funding, either from the agency itself, or a big agency like the Prop 68 funding. And then you layer it on top of each other to do kind of cool things, like EV stations or other stuff to do, to do, to do big projects. So those are some, just some points of reference and things to note in terms of both the, uh, the challenges and the opportunities when it comes to grants. So we looked at, uh, we looked at about four, there's four categories that we're going to, we, we kind of looked at in depth based on prior discussions with the council, and one of them was Las Tunas beautification. And if we were to categorize that, and we'll go through the matrix as well, to show you a couple of the grants that we identified, and then Avant Garde looked at too, and said, those are kind of limited opportunities, but, um, you know, and with, as not as much return. They're limited opportunities simply because, um, unless they're multimodal, it's going to be hard to get funding for the type of improvements that we talked about several months ago with aesthetic improvements and infrastructure. and infrastructure improvements to Las Tunas. Unless you're putting in bike lanes, unless you are reducing lanes, or unless you're doing major transit multimodal type projects, it's, that funding level is limited. Zero emission of infrastructure, that's usually, and we have a good chance with those, those are usually part of larger projects that you would play into. If we would, once, we went out to RFP on March first for design services for permros, for the permros park and parking lot. One of the things we'll be looking at and we're gonna suggest, or one of the directions we need for you tonight, from you tonight, is to see if we pursue one of these propositions, see if we can fund that in, in the pretty near future, would be part of that kind of capital stack I talked about before. Where we have really the strongest opportunity right now is in the park competitive grants, and we'll talk about one of them. And there's park allocation, so there's two, there's two funding sources to measure A at the county level, and let me make sure I'm referencing the proper proposition, POP sixty-eight on the, on the state level. And both have competitive grants, which we think we are very competitive on, and then per capita allocations. And one of the things we wanna talk to you about tonight, too, is on the per capita allocations, you can kind of build that, that reserve, you build that revenue source up over time so that you can do bigger projects. But we do have immediate needs in, in, in our parks. For example, it's no, no secret, if you go to Live Oak Park right now, some of the playground equipment is not in, we've, it's, it's not usable because we've kind of shut it down because it's in a bit of disrepair. We, we would suggest, for example, on the measure A funds, that we would use that over time to do those repairs or build new, or accumulate enough funds over a period of time, one or two years, to be able, or three years, to be able to replace that. And, and, and that is tied specifically to the, excuse me, to the Parks Master Plan. It's one of the major initiatives that the Parks Master Plan identified and doing, and, and a couple other playground locations throughout the park. When it comes to things like multimodal too, if you think about the things that get funded, and councilmember Sternquist, who sits on the, as president of the cog, sees this too in part. A lot of those programs that you see get funded, like our golden streets and other, other bikeway projects or interlinking to broader transit type of projects. Not that other projects don't get funded, but a lot of those are, are getting funded in that manner. Excuse me, and lastly, we, in order to think of the two park types of, of funding, competitive grants versus allocations, the park grants are gonna be in perpetuity. The competitive grants are gonna be the one-time grants. So we're gonna, we gotta think about, in terms of the allocations, we're not gonna be able to tear down Live Oak Park tomorrow unless we got one of the big, big, unless twenty million dollars fell out of the sky to do that. But there are some ongoing repairs to keep that, and staff does a great job of trying to keep that facility as functional as possible. But there are some deferred maintenance issues that we have at that part, at that facility that are a prime candidate for the allocation type of funding mechanisms. So that's a brief overview. It's kind of hard to read this on the screen, but we did print out, staff did print out for you. And there are a few, if anybody, I have a few extra, if anybody in the public would like to see them, is, is, is the funding matrix. And Brian and Kathy did a great job of putting this together. So on the first, I would go to the first page, page one of four, if you have a chance, a review of funding mechanisms. There was a couple grants that we looked at with avant garde too. Our town, a competitive grant about public, the applicable activities would be art design and some infrastructure in public places. We looked at that in terms of Las Tunas. That one is going to be a tough one to do more because we don't, we don't have as, as a robust public art program as we used to. The second, the next round of funding is anticipated in fiscal year nineteen twenty, and we, we will look at that grant again, nineteen, nineteen twenty.
Nineteen twenty.
Yeah. And we'll, we'll take a look at that, we'll take a look at that grant again, but nothing that we would suggest applying for right now. The urban greening infrastructure grant that we, we actually just passed by, but the challenge with that grant at, at this point is because seventy-five percent of the total grant funding is already allocated to disadvantaged and low-income communities. And the other challenge is if you have some kind of existing greening infrastructure in and around those projects, that it has to demonstrate that you have to go kind of above and beyond that to deal with relatively complex matrix, but nothing that's insurmountable in terms of how much carbon storage it does, what does it do to reduce energy and those kind of things. The next one we would look at is on page two. And this is, and this is something, as I, as I mentioned before about the grants, looking at it from a capital stacking standpoint. If you, if we get, we identify one project and we get a big chunk of money or seed funding for one broader project, we would kind of layer this on top of that as part of, as, as part of the project to provide a level of enhancement. So this is an ongoing program, a rebate program to fund electric vehicle stations. We would look at them at permros, but also other public lots. It is a rebate program which covers about seventy-eight to eighty percent of the, of the program cost. This one, we're a bit more competitive for because of some of the characteristics of what we do. So we would evaluate this as the projects kind of come forward. So as we are designing, for example, permros or for when we come back to you with some concepts on the Chamber of Commerce, this, that would include some EV stations or some electric vehicle, other type of electrical vehicle charging stations, that would be part of that.
What do you mean by rebate grant? What does that mean?
Brian, do you wanna kind of explain that real quick? The rebate grant program, how does that kind of, from what you're?
What does that mean, rebate grant?
Good evening, council. Essentially, what it means is that you would have to buy the, the equipment and then you would be, you would submit a rebate for up to eighty percent of the project cost.
Okay, so we buy it and we submit, and then they could give us eighty percent back as a rebate against what we spent.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Brian.
Brian, maybe a quick, the next question is who's gonna pay for the power?
Good evening, council, councilmember Yu. We don't know, and that's, that's one thing that we need to do. We actually have a recommendation here that if council wishes to pursue this further, we can do some due diligence. Unfortunately, the rebate programs, it's, it's all for providing the facility, the charging station, but most cities have seen that the ongoing maintenance is, is a, is an ongoing cost for them. Not to mention, you have to keep those stations open twenty-four seven, so that does present some liability issues. So that we can come back with a plan, and we could also come back with the identification of some potential locations if you so wish.
Brian, I have a question. Do we get a large request for charging stations? Do you know? Does anyone know?
I don't know if we'd get a large request, but we, what you're gonna be seeing coming back from staff pretty soon is AQMD funds that we use for our fleet is gonna have to be plug-in hybrids, they cannot be traditional hybrids anymore, so we're gonna need something like this down the road. If the public uses it or not, we're gonna, there, there's gonna be a need for us to have, and with the emission standards that are coming down for fleets for local agencies. If not now, in the future, this is gonna, this is, this, either for our fleet or just to provide it as a public service, we're gonna need this, we're gonna need this infrastructure at some point.
What type of vehicles are we talking about when you say the city fleet? Is that like our, our patrol cars or our parks and rec vehicles or?
Most, 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 some of our parks and recs are vehicles, but a lot of the staff vehicles that you see just outside of, outside of the smaller vehicles, not the public works or park maintenance vehicles per se, even though that's, that's potentially coming down the pike with some of those Ford F-150s, but some of the smaller vehicles that you see.
But Mrs. City Manager, you're referring to if we were gonna use AQMD funding to acquire them?
Right, so we have a leasing program that we use now, that we use a portion of our AQMD funding to keep that funding going and to be, keep it eligible. The list of, of eligible vehicles have, has really winnowed down to either being purely electric or be, or being required to be plug-in hybrids. So they don't allow, the old hybrid, you know, Toyota hybrid that you had fifteen years ago, doesn't count anymore.
Brian, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm wondering if on that same line that we, you have to eventually use electric lawn mowers and the electric blowers.
That's a great question. It doesn't seem, it, it, it seems that that's kind of where things are going along the AQMD lines. That had, but that's a little bit, in terms of potential use of AQMD funding, they're winnowing down. They can't mandate us to use that, but in terms of the use of, of AQMD funding, that's what they seem to be winnowing down to.
Okay, and then Brian, do you know if the electric vehicle stations in Almonte, if you have to pay the charge? I know some cities have implemented where you have to pay to charge your vehicle.
Yeah, I, I don't know specifically about Almonte. I didn't, I don't, I don't think we took a look at that, but we can take a look and see.
Well, somebody's gotta pay for it.
Yeah.
It's either gonna be the person who uses it or the city.
Well, I, I believe the ones that you use AQMD or use the special grant money, I don't think you can charge if you use grant money to build them.
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
So does this grant, does this grant, this rebate grant doesn't include
Electricity.
monies for the electricity that you?
No, that's, that's, and that's, that's why we're saying it's, 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 it's in terms of, you gotta think of it as the one-time, you know, competitive versus the allocation. That's why we're kind of having the discussion about what you're gonna, what we need, what we as staff are thinking about from the, the competitive grant side or the one-time allocation side, which these are, and what the ongoing allocations are.
Well, it seemed to me that sooner than later, we're going to need these, at least for our vehicles.
Yes.
So it's gonna, we're gonna need a charging station somewhere.
Absolutely.
And the charging station, let's say we put one in for our vehicles, does that have to be available to the public as well, or is that up to us?
I don't know off the top of my head, but we'll take, we'll take a look.
I believe you had to make them available to everyone.
Make available to everyone.
Usually when?
And also that takes the parking spaces out. You can't really park them, park any vehicles.
Brian, I have a question.
We'll just use the city manager's spot.
Yeah.
No problem.
Brian, or either Brian, besides the sheriff's department, do we have any charging stations anywhere else?
Yes, there is.
There is where?
Where, where is?
The sheriff's station.
No, I said besides the sheriff's.
Oh, besides.
That's it. And they, and they just have one?
We should work on doing something like this.
Well, I'm gonna say we need more than one.
I mean, if we wanna encourage.
We're gonna need one anyway, so.
I encourage our residents to, you know, for sustainable communities, then we should look to at least not have our residents have to go to Arcadia or Almonte to charge their vehicles.
So I think with the recommendation that we have, which staff has of doing, identifying some potential locations and whatnot, we could pursue that. So, and that's why the recommendation is there.
I think we need to do something.
Could you also find out, just on average, how much it would cost just electricity wise, what other cities or agencies have? Just so we know, 'cause you, you've mentioned that this is a one-time cost, but obviously the, not just the money for the electricity, but also any maintenance costs associated annually. I think that would be helpful to, to know the full extent of that.
Brian, I have a follow-up on that.
Do we have, and the staff report indicate that the charging stations require large upfront costs and ongoing maintenance. Do we have any numbers on that, or is it, or is it too premature?
It's, it's a little premature, but they are, the, there are different types of, and I don't know if AQMD allows for this type, but there are some semi-commercial, semi-private ones that you can work with. I know this 'cause I have a plug-in hybrid myself, this one called Charge Point, that some agencies or some entities have used, and you kind of, they subsidize the cost of that. So it's something we'll, we'll take a little harder look at as well. Any other questions about that one? All right, let's get on to the goodies. Measure A, measure A and both measures, thank you, Brian. And I may have Kathy or Steve come up and talk about this just a little bit as, as well. So this is where we think we have some very strong possibilities, but just one caveat to let you know about measure A. Measure A does still have a legal challenge out there, and it is, it was, it was a lawsuit that was brought by a taxpayer who challenged the validity of the, the tax itself. It prevailed at the lower court and now is being appealed. And, but it is, it's anticipated that it will prevail because the, the legal arguments are relatively, it's, it, the legal arguments related to why the tax was illegal seem somewhat weak. But in any case, what has that, what has that meant for this funding measure that's been around for a couple of years and now is just starting to slowly get trickled down and finally get implemented and dispersed to the local agencies? First off is that the county is essentially making us sign, for lack of a better term, a waiver. Says you can start drawing down off that funding now, but if you start drawing down off that funding now and the court case prevails, you will, you will have to essentially reimburse the county for the, for the amount that you've drawn down on. We think that risk is relatively small compared to what the, one, the annual allocation, but also, two, going after the competitive grants going forward. So with the competitive grant for measure A, some of the things that we, we were looking at in terms of potential projects would be permros, park facilities, the Chamber of Commerce site reuse, eat and wash, there's three different kind of categories, but it, it, it runs the gamut. It is probably the, the broadest of all the grants, even broader than what we'll talk about with POP sixty-eight to identify. We will come back and, and, and talk to you about pursuing that as well, but again, the competitive grant process itself is on hold pending the litigation, but we can start gearing up. What we can actually ask for right now in terms of the, of funding would be the annual allocation. And one of the, at least pieces of direction we'd like to get from you tonight would be looking at the annual allocation amount. And I'll ask Kathy to come up and talk about kind of what the idea of what that annual allocation would kind of pay for projects and whatnot. I put them both on the spot tonight, they didn't expect to be talking.
Good evening, council. As part of the, the adopted budget this year, we were proposing using some of this annual allocation for improvements or, or maintenance needs for the community center. That building is twenty years old now. The inside has not been painted, so it needs to be painted. The flooring needs to be replaced, especially in the Live Oak rooms. The, the wallpaper in there needs to replace, so a lot of those maintenance types of, of, of projects. So we're hoping that the, the annual allocation for measure A would be available, as we had heard from the county this fiscal year. But as the city manager mentioned, there is still litigation out there, and so the decision that needs to be made is, do we wanna take a chance and move forward with these projects this fiscal year, or hold off and do so next year or after litigation has been finalized? I will say that at least one of those projects, the flooring, we, we feel needs to be done this year, and whether it's with the, the annual allocation funds or general fund, that in, in our opinion is becoming a, a little bit of a hazard, uneven floor tiles. So we do need to take care of that this year. The estimate we received for that is about thirty thousand dollars. So the rest of it, the allocations, we were figuring on using our entire, it's about a hundred and eighty thousand, a hundred and ninety thousand that Temple City will receive every year for the annual allocation. Our hope was to use that entire amount this year to make some much-needed repairs to the community center. And then moving forward, we would come up with a plan for implementation of the facility master plans for Live Oak Park and Temple City Park, including new playgrounds, as was mentioned, and, and some other improvements.
Quick question, allocation, that is per capita, how, how they calculate the?
The, the county one is not a per capita, it's actually a parcel tax, it's a certain amount per square footage of every home.
I see.
So similar to the measure W funding that we're gonna be getting as well, coming down the pike.
So this full amount, one, this one hundred and ninety thousand, that's pending the litigation results?
The county has told us we can submit a proposal for it. We have to request, even the annual allocation, every agency has to submit a request for that funding and what you're going to do with that funding. They do require public meetings to be held. The number of public meetings determines on the amount of the grant. So for the annual allocation, we would likely have to hold just one or two meetings, which could be commissioner council meetings. They don't have to be individual meetings. When you get up to the higher amounts, you have to do specific meetings for that project. So we could request that this year. As the city manager had mentioned, they are allowing us to now request the the grant funds. However, you will be required to sign with all the grants. There is a grant agreement. There is a clause in the agreement that requires agencies to pay back whatever we have received if the litigation fails or if they they lose in court.
Any further questions on this? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. He was first. Last to discuss, and what we've analyzed and taken a hard look at, is finally, the statewide park program, which passed a year and a half ago or so with Prop sixty-eight, has finally come up with the funding requirements. We've done a preliminary review, both staff and AvantGard, and we're suggesting that we try to pursue this this grant. But to let you know, the timing. So as you know, we went into RFP, Mr. Lawson issued the RFP for design services on the first. So we will have at least in going through the process, at least some indication of what level of design and a few other things implemented. So we'll have some preliminary ideas about what that looks like. The time application would be August fifth. We would not know the dispersment, we would not know until later in, or the early part of twenty twenty, and we would have to complete the project by twenty twenty-two. All very achievable timelines. The grant timeline is a very tight timeline, let me excuse me, in terms of the dispersment of the grant and when we'd have to complete that. That's very, that's very achievable. It's probably one of the higher chances we have and one of the key metrics. There's many different metrics. I was looking through it with Kathy as well, Ms. Burroughs as well, and looking at some of the criteria. Our biggest, our biggest asset is our our park space per capita is is our is our is our biggest asset. We could start to do the Chamber of Commerce site, but it's probably a little bit premature. There will be other rounds of this grant available, but for the first round, we would suggest trying to go after the primrose park and primrose parking for this grant. We, and it's, there is, there is a lot of technical aspects to that grant as well, including some, and there are there are community meetings and elsewhere, which we will try to pack in and try to somewhat do a dual track of design work and try to get enough information that's required of this grant to move that, to move the design forward and try to do this grant at the same time. It'll be a challenge for staff, but they're, I think they're up to the task. And so we'll, we would, we would suggest moving forward with that.
Why did you, well, on the feasibility scale, you only give this a four rather than a five? Seems like this one best matches up with our needs. Is that because of the?
We're hedging our bets, sir, so the, on the time, on the timeframe, just, we we think it's very strong, but just the timing is gonna be a bit tight, so we don't wanna.
The August fifteenth?
Yeah, we're hedging our bets a little bit on on how we rated that, but the easy ones are kind of the per allocation amounts that we know we're gonna get, and as Ms. Burroughs stated, only requires a public meeting or two to do as well. But we think we're very strong. It's just, it's gonna be a tight time timeframe to get that done, but we'll, we will do our best. Lastly would be the Prop sixty-eight per capita allocation. This is not similar to the Measure A funding that's coming down the pike, but is a one-time two hundred thousand dollar allocation. The 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 guide and allocations are being released later, Ms. Burroughs? Later, so, so but from what we, from what we can see is it's kind of similar to the Measure A funds, probably a little bit more restrictive because of, as I stated earlier, the state guidelines are a little bit strong, state, the state requirements are going along the lines of active transportation, active transportation, climate change and other things too, but we think it's more than worthy of of pursuing. I'm sorry, there's no, this, this is a direct allocation per the passage of Prop sixty-eight that doesn't require any community meeting. So this is along the lines of what we, what Ms. Burroughs was talking about earlier, looking at repair and other things as well to our existing facilities, rather than building new beautiful facilities just yet, just looking at some of the deferred maintenance to extend the life of several of our park facilities. So that wraps up my presentation. I'm, any questions or comments and hopefully get some direction on some of these tonight?
One question is, are these the only ones that we've looked at? Are there be more once we approve the AvantGard proposal?
We can, we can continue to look at more, but these were the ones that I would describe as the lowest hanging fruit. And AvantGard took a look at a comprehensive listing of what of what they knew was available and out there too. I actually utilized the services of my colleague at the San Gabriel Valley COG to assist and talk about what some available grants were out there. Did we capture every single one? I couldn't, I couldn't tell you one hundred percent for sure that we captured every single one out there, but I think we've captured the vast majority of the major and ones that we think we would be eligible for. But we'll, we'll continue that process going forward. COG's been a good partner in that. AvantGard has been very successful with the city over the years in providing both technical assistance and just being on the lookout too.
I have a follow-up to that question. Should we or do we have some type of in-house system that will keep track of these as they come up? Or as they come up, I mean, we think that, I'm assuming that these come in, come up all throughout the year, and somebody's got to keep track of them rather than hit and miss, so I don't know. Who who's doing that?
We've just created it. This is this is the matrix that we use.
So we will continue doing this?
To do that.
And is that gonna be an in-house thing, or is it?
It's gonna be.
AvantGard's gonna do that?
It's gonna be a partnership between us and AvantGard kind of going going forward, but I'm I'm gonna be utilizing our our friends at the COG as well to assist us do that process. But the matrix that you see here, the template that Mr. Haworth developed is gonna be kind of the template that we use and we'll be giving it to the other staff as well to evaluate and say, okay, let's go through this evaluation process so that it's, I'm not gonna use the right word, kind of quick and dirty way of evaluating and kind of seeing what's out there.
Any questions?
No.
I I just, one, one or two questions. In, for the competitive grant for Prop sixty-eight, could you clarify a little about, under staff notes, it says preference to three partners, including a health organization? What exactly is that?
I would have to either defer to Ms. Haworth or Ms. or Mr. Haworth or Ms. Burroughs on that one.
In reviewing the the guidelines for the competitive grant, there's about ten to fifteen areas where they allocate points for each area. One of the requirements is that there is partnerships with the agency and another one or two partners. It could be school districts. It could be health organizations. You might recall when we applied for grant funding for the walking path at Live Oak Park, we had the convalescent home for instance across the street, wrote a letter of support, so the, their their patients could use the walking path. So that's kind of the partnerships that they're looking at, is those types of partnerships. And so it depends on what the the use is. If we're looking at building a new park, then it should be relatively easy to get some support from a a healthcare provider in the city or other entities to express the benefit of having a new park in the city, since we're so park poor, especially in the downtown area.
So it's not so much a formal partnership, it's support.
It's not very clear what they say. The requirements have just come out, the the, the grant guidelines have just come out. So, you know, they're usually pretty flexible in that, and if you don't have a hundred percent of worth asking for, you can still submit. You just won't be as competitive, won't get as many points.
That's probably why I got a four instead of a five.
AvantGard is used to finding these these partners.
Can you use MOUs with in-kind services as part of the matching grant?
I, I'm not sure if it requires a matching grant, but for the partnership, I would assume you could. They they haven't come, again, the the details are not finalized yet. They're just coming down right now.
All right, and just one more question maybe for Mr. Cook. You mentioned the March first, the RFP went out for primros, right?
Yes, sir.
So I guess moving forward, how does that work in relation to the grant funding? Are those two moving in parallel?
They're gonna have, they're, we haven't, find out, we haven't completely hashed that out, but we're, I've given the direction to staff to go ahead and go pursue that grant, pending obviously council approval, but yeah, there's gonna be some, there's gonna be some simultaneous movement with that. So we'll have to, there may be some stuff that we bring back to council earlier rather than later to kind of work those in parallel, where they, where they work in parallel.
Maybe I I I draw some conjecture here. I mean, typically these park grants, even I haven't read, obviously read the the grant language. Typically, you'd be in a better position, you actually already have a design, because when you submit to the grant agencies, he'd like to know what you're gonna use this grant for. And typically for park type of arrangement, it's always good to actually have, I mean, if you would call it shuffle-ready, maybe perhaps, at least program-ready. You tell them that, you know, with this money, we can do this park and help our our city do this and that, and we'll, and this park we're gonna provide a space where you can do this, you can do the, you can do tai chi, you can do, you know, aerobics and things of that nature. And that would maybe, you know, aerobics, tai chi type, you know, be supported by, let's say, some health part, healthcare partners here, and they can say, I, you know. So, you know, it's having the RFP actually will help us, because it brings to us a designer to can help us visualize. And some grants allow you to send, submit drawings and.
Right.
ID, other things.
So actually, that's a great segue to kind of a similar question is, is it correct to assume that the work for primros will be done by the application deadline, so that when we submit for the application, it will be like what council member you is alluding to?
We're going to do our best.
Okay.
We'll have, it's gonna be extremely tight. So it may, that's why it's a four. It's, it'd be honest, it's maybe is not as a complete of application, but we're gonna, we're, it's still worth, it's still worth submitting and we can say, here's, and what we can at least put in there, and that's why we may, depending on how the scoring, because I don't want to prejudge where we're gonna go, but they'll maybe pending this, pending two or three other things as well.
Oh, yes, please.
Well, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Megan. I'm with AvantGard. So I attended a workshop for this grant program last week, and you do not need to have full design done. They're completely okay with even hand-drawn conceptual designs for the park, and you can use grant funds for design services. As long as they took place after June twenty eighteen.
June twenty eighteen.
Yes.
June twenty eighteen.
So from June twenty eighteen on, you can use grant funds.
So if I understand what you're saying, that means the services where you just went out for RFP can be covered potentially by the grant money?
If awarded, yes.
If awarded.
So long we NTP them on that June twenty eighth date.
Well, she said twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen, whatever, yeah.
Oh, okay.
I mean, they cannot start the design work ahead of time. For reimbursement.
We're past June twenty eighteen, so anything moving forward is okay.
So we're already ahead of that, so, okay, thank you. That's good information.
Thank you.
All right, so is there any other council questions at this moment?
No, I just would like to thank staff for enhancing this to this size.
Yes.
So it's easily to read, easy to read. Thank you.
Did a good job.
Okay, so at this point, I'd like to open public comment. Do you have Mr. Steve Stafford, who would like to speak on this matter?
Mayor, man, mayor pro tempore fish, council members and city staff, my name is Steve Stafford. I've been listening to this, and we should try to capture as many of these grants as we can. You know, it only makes sense if we got facilities that need upgrades and need repair. We should try to capture these grants now, because who knows, next year, there may be none available, in two years, they may be none available. We don't, nobody really knows. This stuff changes all the time, and new laws are being passed that change some of these grants. I see it in the paper all the time, and we should capture as many of these grants as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that'd like to speak on this matter? All right, seeing none, I will close public comment. Onto a council discussion. I don't know, Mayor, do you have any thoughts on this matter?
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank staff for doing this very comprehensive study. I I like to be able to see it and compare with what's going on. You know, we get so much information that sometimes it's hard to get, at least for me, to get a clear picture of what's going on. I do think that our parks, we need to take care of our parks, the ones we have. Besides primros, I don't see an opportunity anytime soon to have somewhat of a large park, just because we are landlocked and because the land is so expensive. So I would like to make sure that we take care of our parks. We have beautiful parks. They're very heavily used, and I think that's one of the reasons why they're maybe falling apart a little bit. But yeah, I would, I would like to pursue any grant that we, that that is within reach. I mean, you've made it very clear that there's a couple here that we have a very good chance of getting, and I think that's great. You know, there's some that we don't have a good chance of getting. So yeah, I would like to, I would like to see, or I would like to, you know, do whatever possible we can, especially to maintain our parks.
And you'd be okay with the twenty-four thousand nine hundred?
I would be okay, yes. I would, I do believe in investing, yes.
Okay.
I think that would be a very good, wise investment.
Okay, thank you. Council member you?
I think, Mr. Mayor, I think it's a wonderful idea, so I, and getting grant money is the best way. You you put in a little bit of money and you get so much return of it. Personally, I've worked on many parks for the county or in other, I mean, they always come with like this kind of grant. I've never seen the county itself do any park development without some kind of grant, so I mean, I think it's a must before that example.
Great, thank you. Council member Sternquist?
You know, I'm just wondering if I I know a park is, there's many different definitions of a park, but are there any grants that you've ever seen that are matching or otherwise where a parkway, such as like on Rosemead Boulevard, I mean, the medians there that enhance the quality of life for people, that could help us like replace the banners? Are there ever any types of grants that you've ever seen come forward such as those?
I haven't, but I would have to defer to the either staff or AvantGard to kind of give us any indication of. Not, I don't think there was anything that we saw that's currently eligible, but I would. We'll, we'll, we'll be on the lookout. But nothing that's, nothing that's, that we saw that we evaluated that's, that's there.
So, I mean, is there a specific definition of what the size of a park has to be to be considered a park? For most of these grants?
That's a good question. I I don't know off the top of my head. I would assume it would have to be something, but I I defer to either Kathy or AvantGard to help to, based on their experience.
I'm not aware of any size requirement for a park. It's just, again, for most of them, you have to go through public meetings to determine the residents in that area, what they want, what they would like to see, but I know there are several cities that have gotten funds for very small parks.
Thank you.
I have a question. Didn't we, when we went through the part, the new, our new parking lot, we were trying to decide if we wanted to make it a park or parking lot, didn't we, it had to be designated as a park? I mean, it can't be just a open space, because I remember we we were trying to be very careful as to not designate too much open space.
I'm not a hundred percent sure what you're asking. I'm not a hundred percent sure what you're asking, but you can, part of the, the park grants, uh, the state and the, and the county, I both believe, allow you to just have open space. Doesn't have to be a park, but it has to be public open space. Um, so, I guess it depends on your definition of a park. For me, open space where the public's using it is a park, but.
And I think, to your question, most of, of that was the discussion regarding that once you designate something as a park, then it's hard to eliminate.
Right, right, so we didn't want it, even though it had a little bit of open space, not much, it's got just a little tiny bit.
We don't wanna designate it as a park.
Right, so, that's why I was thinking, if we have to designate it a park in order to, okay.
Yes, yes. In perpetuity.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Perpetuity.
That's a nice word. Say that fast.
We use a new term in trust, perpetuity clause.
My turn? Council, councilor Sternquist, do you have anything else, or?
Um, I don't.
Okay, all right, councilor Chavez?
Thank you. Uh, first of all, I guess because you asked the question of, of Mayor Pro Tim, uh, Fish, yes, I do agree with the preparation for the grant writing services, it seems like that's a good start. However, even looking at that, appears that we, and something we've always known is that we do have limited time and resources in going after these things, that seems to be the biggest hurdle we've had to overcome through the years. And so, I appreciate the, um, the work that was done by staff and, and especially the feasibility, uh, numbers that they gave us, I think that's most helpful, because certainly we don't wanna chase something that is going to be, uh, almost impossible to gain and put time and resources into that, with really no chance of any kind of, uh, compensation. So, to me, the first two would definitely probably fall off the list for me. Uh, that is the one from our town in urban greening. Perhaps one of these days, if we ever get our public art program back up to speed and, and some of these other things, it's something we could take a look at in the future. Uh, as far as the, uh, the other three, or is it three or four, I believe, uh, actually, uh,
Five.
Five. The measure, uh, first of all, the Southern Californian incentive program, I think that is probably something we should look into. To me, it looks like it's going to be something that we need anyway, since we're gonna be moving towards electric vehicle purchases. I would like to see some more, uh, information regarding the costs and fees, and I'm sure that's something that will come to us before we actually formalize that, but certainly something that, uh, if not for the, uh, public, at least for the city vehicles, we're gonna need to have, so, it'd be nice to have some of that paid for. As far as the measure A, um, I think, um, although given the litigation, it sounds like it's worth the risk, we would spend the money anyway, and, um, it sounds like there's a good chance that, that, uh, we would not have to reimburse, so, I think those two are probably something that we should pursue.
So, are, I guess, you bring up a good point, sorry to interrupt you, but, but, uh, Ms. Burrows did ask one question for council direction regarding the, uh, thirty thousand dollars for the flooring, whether we would want them this fiscal year or not, is, is that something that you want us on council direction?
Well, uh, we just, I think just getting some general direction that you're okay with what we've
Oh, I see, so it's not
pursued, and
Okay.
we already have that as general fund, funded now, if we, uh, we, where do we have that funded, Kathy? Measure A.
Okay, so it's already, okay, never mind.
So, it'd be one of the ones that we might have to pay back.
Yes.
So, we're gonna do it anyway, no, worth the risk. And as far as the last two, um, proposition sixty-eight, uh, you know, given the timeframe, I never quite understood why it takes so long to write a grant, I guess it's like writing a thesis maybe or something, I don't know, but, uh, it would seem like, uh, August fifth is, uh, it's months from now, but, uh, I understand it does take a while, but hopefully we can meet that, uh, deadline and, uh, get that in, I'm sure there's a lot of work that goes into that, so, I think both of those, uh, both programs for Prop, under Prop, uh, sixty-eight would, uh, certainly, uh, at this point, be worth looking into. Uh, also, I, just to add to this, and I mentioned earlier, I think this is a great thing, and I think I would like, I certainly would like to see us continue with these, uh, these types of things, and maybe provide a matrix like this, uh, I don't know how often it should be done, but it's something that we need to keep an eye on and, and continually update perhaps, and it sounds like that's something that you've already thinking about, uh, so, um, if we can continue that, I think we'll stay on top of the balls.
Perhaps a quarterly update on, on something, or maybe you could get back to us as to
If I can get back to you, because it, depending on the cycle of, of funding, it,
It depends
We wanna give you, wanna give you timely information, but not just repeat the same thing over and over.
Well, as things fall off and things get added, then you can update.
Absolutely.
Yeah, sure, whenever it's relevant.
Okay, all right, thank you. And so, um, I, I, I too appreciate, um, this matrix, because it's not something that we've had before for council to look over and, and discuss, so, I think it's, this is good practice moving forward. I'm definitely for looking at the, uh, Southern California incentive projects, um. I guess the next step really is for staff to come back and provide some more detail as to where exactly those would be if we, um, if we are eligible for those funds and how they would be used. And as well as the, the costs associated with, um, maintenance, annual maintenance and, uh, providing the actual electricity. Yeah, and I'm, I'm all for all these, uh, the competitive grants for measure A and Prop sixty-eight. Again, I'll just reiterate that I think it's important if we, I mean, I, I know Avan, uh, Megan from Avant Garde had mentioned that, um, the competitive grant just, you know, they would accept hand sketches, but, uh, it just seems to me that if we had something more buttoned together, that
We have a better chance.
our chances would just be a lot better, so, um.
We'll do the best we can.
Yeah, and, um, one thing I wanted to add, but I don't know if it fits directly into this category, is measure W money.
Yeah.
Um, 'cause there is a component of measure W money that is competitive grants in nature, uh, especially the regional projects.
Yes.
So, um, I think the timeline for that is actually happening this year.
Yes.
And really, I mean, there, there's probably a lot more engineering work and planning work behind that to really assess whether we qualify for that grant. But, uh, again, the, there's a component of measure W related to community enhancements that is basically park-related. Although, I think at one of the last meetings, I shared that that's the third tier priority. Like, their first tier is water quality, second is water conservation, and third is community enhancements, and so, uh, both council member you and I work for the county, so we see these projects that are happening, and, um, it's very clear that most of them are happening in particularly disadvantaged communities. But there, there's also a lot of it that's based on sort of the water quality needs, and, um, I don't know where exactly we as a city fall within that, um, but we do know we have two county flood control channels that run through our city, and those are those points that measure W is trying to solve. Um, and then you also listed Eaton Wash as a potential project here, so, when we're talking about partnerships or these grant applications, um, I don't know if there's an opportunity for us to partner with the county to go after some of this money. I, I know that might get a little tricky, because we don't own the property along the flood control channel, but if we look at other cities like the city of LA and other, other places, they've taken flood control channel property and turned it into parkways.
Mm-hmm.
Green spaces.
And I think we talked about that.
Yeah.
We talked, we talked about the, I can't remember what it was called, corridor?
Yeah.
The, yeah.
Yeah, so, so it's
Maybe if the county didn't take all the money, there would be some left for our cities.
Yeah, but the thing is, the county tends to look, look at things in very specific silos, so, like, for example, I, I alluded to the, um, Eaton Wash being turned into a bike path, and so that, that's part of the LA County's greater bicycle master plan. But then if you look at the bike master plan in a vacuum, it doesn't really consider like parks, parkway spaces and, you know, that, that kind of things. So, but to, to, at least in, in my opinion, it seems like for, for us as a community, we would probably value green space more than just a simple bikeway that runs through the channel, so, so perhaps that's something that staff can look at and maybe add to the matrix if applicable. You know, along with, you know, these, these columns are great to give us sort of like an idea of feasibility, types of monies that we would, we would be able to
And, and you're familiar with, I assume, this, would you say Prop W?
Measure W.
Measure W, because of your work.
Yeah.
But my, I would, what I mentioned earlier, I would hope we would go beyond that. I don't know what these measures are, they, that's for staff and Avant Garde to tell us, that's,
Exactly.
you know, somebody, that's why I mentioned, somebody here needs to keep up on these things that come about, I can't do it, uh, somebody has to.
Yeah, and I just happen to know it because of
Right, that's what I mean, you, you work with it, but otherwise, I would never have known of that.
But again, I, I'm not jumping to the conclusion that we're automatically eligible for that, because there's a lot of nuances behind it. Like, you, the, Avant Garde alluded to a rating system, and so with measure W projects, there's a rating system that goes along with it as well. And so, I don't know enough about the details of how the profile of our watershed or community, whatever you wanna call it, is gonna fall into that. But there, you know, considering what the county is trying to do, um, there's a lot of overlap with, with these things, like, they're talking about, when they, when the county talks about like, say, green streets, you, you talk about green streets here, but when the county talks about green streets, they mean something completely different. They're talking about streets that infiltrate water into the ground, and not just turning streets into green space. So, it's stuff that you don't really see on the surface, but it's that type of additional project component, or however you wanna call it, that then makes a project eligible for that type of funding. Um, so, so there's a lot of still unknowns, and that, that stuff is still being rolled out, but I would encourage, um, we try to take advantage of that if, if we can.
When a city is designated as, um, disadvantaged, or, um, is it based solely on the socioeconomic, um, level of the residents? Because at some point in time, it's a little bit frustrating that the disadvantaged communities actually become the most advantaged communities, because they get all the resources. And the not-so-disadvantaged communities are, you know, down here on the bottom, and I, and, and at some time, I think that there needs to be a paradigm shift there, where people take a look at, you know, cities, I mean, look at our partnership with the library. I mean, it definitely shows that we were willing to reach out, and yet, when you get points on these grants, we're not considered disadvantaged. So, is it based solely on the socioeconomic level of the residents, Brian?
Yes, it is, is part of the census data, it's part of the census tract, so each census tract, and depending, and I've worked in different communities well, as well, where um, that's, that is why essentially we are called a, to, to use the best example, that's why we are a non-entitlement city for CDBG funding. We do not meet the amount of census tracts in order to be eligible for that, to be in certain, certain types of, uh, classifications and categories for that type, and eligible for that type of funding. So, yeah, it's, it's all data-driven about what's actually happening, usually surrounded about the census, not just the, uh, every ten years, but there's also other census, the, other census data that drives it, but that's, that's the main, it's the main data point that, that makes that determination.
Thank you.
Which means that we will never be considered to be disadvantaged.
Disadvantaged.
But you know, that's, that's, uh,
We're at a disadvantage.
But that's a catch-22, I think, uh, you know, it, I think the argument would be, okay, so they're disadvantaged, they, they can get a nice park for their residents to use, but that doesn't change the median income for those families either. Uh, and so, there's a trade-off, uh, somewhat, and I think that's why they, they use that as a guideline, uh, so.
So, it doesn't matter how much money they take in from taxes or a dispensary, manufacturing, or?
I'm sure that's, that will somehow, somehow filter in soon, because that's where a lot of cities are moving towards.
It's here.
All right, and, and just one, one last thing is, um, it would be nice in the upcoming preparation of the budget to kind of point out some of this in relation to our capital improvement plan, projects plan?
Yeah.
Uh, just so we have a, we can kind of join, join it together.
Mr. Harworth did the five-year capital, so we'll, you know, talk about how we can look at some funding and how that kind of plays into that, too.
Okay, great, so, um,
Can I just, can I get one point of clarification, too?
Yes.
Is the council comfortable with our approach to the allocation amounts, that we're really gonna drive that funding towards uh, the list of kind of maintenance projects or other projects that Ms. Burrows and staff identify at the parks, are you okay generally with that approach?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, no, thank you, and, uh, with that of
Well, Ms. Mayor, I just wanna add one point, one thing to your point of, um, up, in the upcoming budget to destinate, at least that we can see some of these in the capital part of it. But at, at the same time, I, you know, tonight will be, as, we're being asked to approve about twenty-five thousand dollars, moving from a general fund reserve to, uh, use for Avant Garde, which I support tonight. However, you know, my philosophy always been, it's always to, better to budget something in your regular budget than pulling money from your reserve. So, I would also add that to your point of, uh, in the upcoming budget to actually destine certain funds in our budget already, as part of the next year's budget, um, to partner with, uh, with a grant eight writing agency to help us, uh, pursue these grants, to, um, council member Chavez point, if somebody has to look for these things and, and, and and, uh, and pursue them for us.
Yeah, that's, that's a, that's a great point, I, I concur, 'cause, I mean, our, when we do the budget, we're looking at, you know, what's considered essential city business, right?
Right.
And if we're pulling it from reserves, it just seems like it's just this one-time thing that we do occasionally. But if grant writing, like, I think council member you, you alluded to earlier, it's a great way for us to leverage resources, if, you know, we're, we're a small city, we don't have as great resources as some other cities. Perhaps grant writing is an essential part of doing city business, and should, I, I agree with you, should be, uh, sort of embedded into our, our regular city budget if, if possible, so, okay. All right, so, uh, if there is no further, uh, council comments, if I may have a motion on this, uh,
Your man, I would make a motion that we direct the city manager to pursue identified grant funding opportunities as discussed tonight, and also direct the city manager to return with a programming strategy for measure A and Prop sixty, funding allocations, as well as designate twenty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars from the general fund reserve to account number zero-one dash nine-one-zero dash four-two dash four-two-three-one, professional services.
Accepting.
All right, we have a motion in the second, uh, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Council member Chavez?
Yes.
Council member Sternquist?
Yes.
Council member you?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Fish?
Yes.
Mayor Man?
Yes. All right, so that motion has been approved unanimously, and that concludes that item. Uh, moving on to a update from our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Man, I'll be brief, um, just a couple, uh, quick updates. Uh, having good communication with our new superintendent, uh, talked to her about first fifteen minutes in the senior master plan direction that the council gave the other day. I attended today with, uh, one of our
Any response to either of us?
Not yet, but I'm sure we'll get, we'll, we'll get some, we'll get some sort of response. The superintendent has a lot on her, on her plate, so, she's got a lot to do with, and there's some other things I've been, I'm talking to her about as well, but give her a chance to breathe and get acclimated. Um, good news on the, on the library, uh, the library, uh, project is in plan check with the county of Los Angeles Public Works Department
Yay!
as, as, as proposed and as, uh, fully built out, so, um, that'll take some time, but that's a good, uh, milestone point for us going forward. Um, and then we'll, they'll be going out to bid shortly thereafter. Uh, we did have our, I know, your monthly sheriff's breakfast meeting, um, we, as, uh, many of the council members, uh, please see if you can attend, uh, seven AM, uh, fourth Wednesday of the month, next one will be April nineteenth. Uh, nice breakfast, get a chance to talk to, and one of our dedicated deputies here, and, uh, not a dedicated deputy, but Deputy B, he's always, uh, he's, is one of our patrol deputies in town, and is very familiar with our community as well, um, so, please come. Uh, lastly, with the COG, uh, our management analyst, Ms. Avery Uh lastly, with the COG, uh our management analyst, Ms. Avery and I, attended a coyote regional management plan meeting today. Uh we're not going to try to put more work on the COG, but there may be some work the COG assists in our regional approach to coyote management, which seems to be the more effective rather than city by city. Coyotes do not know borders and, and their behavior does not know our, our jurisdictional borders. So um about six weeks from now, we may be coming with a, a broader approach to coyote management. Uh but more to come on that front.
And we recently put up new signs, right, on near the flood control?
Yeah, thanks to supervisor, the, our supervisor and um the county public works department as well. Uh if you go to the washes, there's, if, if you go to Arcadia as part of their coyote management plan, we stole one of their ideas of just having some warning signs near the um, near the washes uh and just kind of warning that they're wild animals. Here's information about what we do. Um and that's probably one of the broader uh implementation issues that we're going to be doing. Yeah, but we, we didn't, we can't take credit for that. We stole that from uh, from uh Arcadia. But thanks to staff and the supervisor's office. That's it, Mayor Man.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh update from our city attorney.
Uh none tonight, but given tonight's discussion, we'll bring back an update on the Measure A litigation in two weeks so that you'll have some idea of where that is and what the expected timeframe uh is for it as you're entering into your budget process.
Is that in the court of appeal?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, next we have a council reports on ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Do we have any?
Uh Mr. Mayor, uh two weeks ago, uh February twenty-second, uh you and I um ca- uh the facility public works infrastructure standing committee uh consisting of you, yourself and, and me. Uh we have met with uh city staff um on um refining the upcoming pavement management plan report. We've given staff um some, some feedback, directions. And uh but staff would need a little bit of time to put together the final report. And I think we're looking at April sometime to bring it this back.
We're targeting first meeting in April.
First meeting in April to bring this back to, to the full council of the different, and we'll, they'll be talking about different funding levels as well that would, and, and what options we have so for the full council to consider.
Great, thank you. Is there any other ad hoc or standing committees? No? Okay. Then uh moving on to council items separate from the agenda, uh council member you.
Well, uh Mr. Mayor, it's a great pleasure to be working with you this year in wonderful, wonderful state of the city address. So want to congratulate you on the great year's work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh okay, council member Chavez?
Took the words right out of my mouth.
Yeah.
I want to thank Mayor Man, of course, this is his last full meeting, uh probably. Um and uh it's been a great year. I want to thank you for your leadership and uh, and also for your state of the city address. And especially thank you for using Youth Committee.
Oh, yes.
It was a very nice touch, uh and I know they were very appreciative of it, so. And uh that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh council member Sternquist?
Thank you, William, for a wonderful and inspiring state of the um city address. It was enjoyable and um I think it gave our residents a lot to think about moving forward, how we need to partner in whatever that might be. But um I think it set the, the stage for us moving forward, so thank you for that. Um a couple of things that I, I think of our inter- of interest to us. Um Foothill Transit recently has had a swarm of lawsuits from a particular person with a disability. And I know recently there was a, was it Public Works, Brian, that met with, on um recently with COG?
Uh if I'm thinking the same thing you're thinking of, yes.
So I, it was the Public Works TAC that?
Yes.
I, I get them all. There's so many different ones, but.
Mike, Michael does, Mr. Forbes does try to attend the Public Works TAC when he can.
And um they, Dorin Barnes is um director of Foothill Transit, presented at the meeting and spoke to the fact that bus stops are really the city's responsibilities. But the um, some of these lawsuits have been geared towards both the Foothill Transit organization and the city. So they wanted to inform the public works directors that the cities have the responsibilities for making sure that they are ADA accessible. And I, I'm sure once um they finish with Foothill Transit, they'll be moving on to metro stops. Now, we have mostly metro stops and only one um Foothill Transit or two, Kathy?
There's two in there.
Okay, so um it, it was interesting because it seems like an attorney has made a recent living very successfully on suing on the issue of AD accessible bus stops.
San Diego lawyer?
I don't know, I don't know.
There is an attorney in San Diego that, that all the time.
Wow.
I've had a few of my clients who suffered his wrath.
Interesting. And then this, this afternoon, bef- actually before I came to the meeting, there was a news blurb about a um recent rash of lawsuits in which the um person filing the suit had, lands up getting about a four thousand dollar settlement and has already won about fifteen or twenty cases. And it was regarding, um she's legally blind. And she has been suing small business owners that have a website. So if you have a website that is not accessible with read-aloud software, you are.
That's awful.
It, putting yourself in a position that you could possibly be sued. And because there was a recent decision in the appellate, California appellate court upholding this, they foresee a rash of new lawsuits coming in regards to um businesses not having read-aloud software, which then made me question, would cities, are cities exempt from having read-aloud um software on our own websites or are we the next target? So if we can find some information on that, I mean, I, I, it, it just made me think further. Like, well, what are we, are we next in line? But um I think that's some things to be aware of. Um also, um Brian recently had staff send out a similar matrix for code enforcement. And I think that's going to be very helpful for us also. I really appreciate the ones we get from community development about the different um, you know, buildings that are coming in, new developments, new businesses. I think it's very helpful for us, especially when residents ask us what's going on, on, on this property. So I want to thank you for that too. A reminder that the COG's general assembly uh for twenty nineteen is coming up soon. And I think Eliana sent you an invite today. So if you can take time out of your day, it's on April tenth from nine to one thirty.
That's the one, the state of industry?
City of Industry. And actually, this year, because of the COG strategic plan that we just finished, um transportation, homelessness, and the environment are the key issues that speakers will, will be addressing. And let's see, was there one other thing? Um I will be attending the Sacramento Water Tour starts. I know council, uh Mayor Proton Fish has gone on that with Charles Trevino. And I saw that Dan O'Reilly is actually one of the um participants too. So, yeah, so I'll be seeing him this weekend.
Chris Charles isn't on the board anymore, is he?
Yes, he is. He's, he's our district's representative. He is.
Is he still? Okay.
So he leads these and um they're actually available to all elected officials, school board members, um city staff.
You just have to sign up right away because it fills up quickly.
Yes, it's very, well, with you, right?
Did you go in, Ben?
Okay, you and I.
We went together.
Yeah, I never have.
You should go, that's right. We, we went together. So um I don't know what to expect, but I think.
You'll like it. Yeah, you will, you will really like it.
So now there's more water.
Right.
Yeah.
It really helps us understand, you know, the, the production, storage. And the issue is not that we don't have enough rain. The issue is we don't have enough storage.
For it.
For it, so.
The rain doesn't really help as much.
Well, not if all the waters just.
It just flows to the.
Not if it just flow into nowhere.
And, and I think that really helped us to, uh, give us perspective that we really should seriously consider all the water measures that help us increase, number one, the storage, number two, improve the safety of our storage um, um facilities such as reservoirs.
One of the things that I might have mentioned to Mr. Trevino, I don't think in all the years we've ever been on council, we've ever had someone from their board come to speak to us about any issues or ways that we can help.
No, you know, he's.
I don't know that we ever had.
He's come out to a few of our functions.
I think he came one time when he was ru- running for election.
Uh he, yes.
Yeah, one time.
Uh but one time when they.
He, and remember, he was instrumental in getting the landscaping for us.
No, I'm not saying they're not helpful to us, but I'm just saying.
No, no, but I think he came out then, but, but I will definitely, I'll just invite him to come out and update us on what's happening there. I'm sure he'd be willing to come.
Sure. Yeah, he's a good guy. I think he'd do it.
Yeah, so um that's it, I think, yep.
All right, thank you. Mayor Proton Fish?
Um just a couple of things. One thing is I wanted to congratulate the Camilla Festival organization for another very, very successful event. Um I'm not sure how they get the weather to cooperate, but it was beautiful. Uh the parade was excellent, carnival. Um they're a great organization. They do a lot for the community. And I had a great time, so it was great. Always look forward to that. Second, um it's been a pleasure working with you, William. Um state of the city, you were a rock star. Let me just, let me just tell you.
All right.
Um I've got lot and lots and lots of comments about, about just like, like council member Sternquist said, how inspiring it was. Um you know, you walked out of there and you were just like, wow, that's, that's my city. And we're doing some great things and we have a lot of great things that are coming into view, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, th- thank you all for the, the support. I mean, the state of the city is a reflection of all collective effort. So it's not, I, I just happen to have the privilege of delivering the message.
We did a great job.
But yeah, it's a collective effort. Um I, I appreciate all, all five of us here on council. There's, we, I, I think we have great discussions on, on all the important issues. And, and we find ways to, to make things work. We, we, I, I truly believe we're, we're unified in a common goal if we're looking at the bigger picture. So um a- and that's sort of what I wanted to highlight as part of that is, is if we can be the models for being unified towards a, a larger goal then um perhaps our community can also find ways to uh, to follow that, that same sort of method and partnerships and, and teamwork. So uh it's, yeah, speaking of that, the reorg, uh our council reorganization is in two weeks on uh March nineteenth. Um and I'm, I'm looking forward to it. I think uh.
I think it'll be good.
And I remember um Cindy, you were telling me uh last year that you're like, well, yeah, it's, it's, it's time.
Time.
A- as in, as in uh, for, for me at least, the, the past year has been uh very hectic. But in, in a good way. I, I think there was a. I think what made it great was I had a, a great opportunity to not only meet a lot of folks in our community and get to know a lot of the organizations better. Um and it was a in- immense learning experience for me. And, and I'm so glad I had the support of, of all, all of you uh that made that year a ver- a lot easier, so. So I want to thank you all for.
I have a question. Is there a color theme for the reorganization? Because you have this beautiful Camilla tie on. I just assumed we had a color for the reorganization.
So I, I can't take any credit for any sort of color coronation because I, I clearly don't have that skill. That's all Eliana, to her credit. Um but yeah, that's a good question, maybe um, because I, I, I know Eliana was, was getting more ties. Or I guess we, we weren't sure how, what the reaction would be from, from that tie.
I think it's great.
Yeah, but um, but we'll, we'll, we'll see, we'll see.
Well, do you like purple, William?
Me? I. Yeah, I have a bunch of, yeah. Well, I, I wasn't really sure about the pink tie. That's, that's what got me. I, when, when Eliana showed me that, I was like, ah, I don't know if I could pull that off.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it was beautiful.
Yeah, but you know what, one thing I just saw, on a, on a more personal note, um it was very nerve-wracking for me to, to uh give the state of the city. But what really helped was that giant spotlight that essentially blinded me. And so I couldn't see anybody in the audience. Like I, like everyone on the left side, because the light was coming from that side, I couldn't see anybody here. And then I could barely make out like people's faces on, 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 on the right side. So, so I think that, I was actually more nervous that moment when they turn up, when Jillian turned on the lights. I was like, oh my God, I could see everybody all of a sudden. And then so I almost blanked out on my closing statement because the lights were on. I'm going, wait, what's going on?
Exactly. We did great.
Yeah, and, and again, um actually, I, I want to thank uh council member Chavez, done a great work with the youth committee. And so I, I thought, uh, hey, I think they're ready for a, a, a big stage. Why not, why not let them, let them have at it? And um really, the, the idea for the close really started with uh Eliana. I need to give her, her credit. She was the one who came up with the idea for putting the um, the pictures, the posters, blowing them up and having each picture represent a different topic. And then when she brought that up, I was like, well, how, if we have ten poster boards and we have eleven youth committee members, maybe somehow we can do something with that. And so one thing sort of just led to another, so.
It worked out really well.
Yeah, and, and shout out to her for doing an incredible job in, in putting that together, so. Uh so, all right, so uh moving on uh to reimbursements, uh we have none. Uh additional public comments, uh is there anyone who would like to make comment at this time? All right, seeing.
Jerry, Jerry, do you have anything, Jerry?
Let's go home.
All right, seeing none, uh we are adjourned. Good night.
Thank you.